Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Our first item is to conduct our first citizens' participation period.
Okay, and I do want to clarify something. What is our agenda on the paratransit number?
Uh, 30.
It's 47.
It's number 47.
Okay, number, agenda item number 47.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
We're going to have the presentation, as promised, on our ADA paratransit. Here's, those wishing to speak, you certainly can speak at the first public comment now on the posted agenda item, and you will be limited to three minutes. Or if you choose to wait for the item, you can speak after the presentation on item number 47, but depending on the number of speakers, we may have to limit the comments from three minutes to two minutes. You can speak either/or, and then certainly at the end of the meeting. But you are not able to speak on item 47 now and when we hear the item. Is that okay? Let me, let me see. How many are here to speak on item 47? Okay, so do you want to, do you want to wait for the item? And we'll, and we'll present the three minutes after the presentation. So is there anyone wishing to speak on any of the posted agenda items? Now is your opportunity. Is this on the trillium issue?
Yes, item 30.
We are going to pull that from consent and hear that separately, and you and anyone wishing to speak on that item will be able to speak at that time. So just wait two minutes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, my mistake. Seeing and hearing, no one will close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Next is to approve the agenda, and as you mentioned, you, I think, have a request to pull an item.
Yes, so motion to approve the agenda. We're going to move the budget forward on this item.
Oh, yes, we'll move items 47, I'm sorry, 48 through, 48, 49, and 50 will move forward as our first items to, after consent agenda, to, in order to make sure we get our budget approved before anybody needs to leave.
And in consent, we will be pulling number 30 on the consent agenda.
Correct, okay, and we have a request to pull item number 30 from the agenda, so we'll hear that after we hear the budget items.
Thank you, so that's my motion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next up is your general manager's report, and we do have several items to share with you. Just last week, the RTC and its partners celebrated National Infrastructure Week. We hosted a series of events to educate the public and elevate infrastructure as a critical issue impacting our economy. And JP, John Penuelas, is presenting to you our orange cones that have traveled throughout the valley to your board and council meetings over the past two weeks. Your members expressed their support for National Infrastructure Week by signing this cone, and we'd like to take a photo of all of you with it. We spoke to thousands of people in our community who recognized the need for solid infrastructure and how it benefits our workforce, local small businesses, residents, and visitors. We'd like to take a photo, and we subsequently will share a video with you. We'll show a quick video of how we celebrated the week.
Just came out here just to see what it was. I didn't even have a resume, but I just love it so much, there's so much that you can learn here.
I got a job offer from TransDev. I walked in here unemployed, and now I'm leaving employed, so that's a come up.
Welcome to the Lone Mountain Regional Park, and a new chapter in our road construction, more investment coming into our community. It is the kickoff of the fuel revenue indexing extension. The community supported the ballot initiative to extend the fuel revenue for another 10 years, 10 years that will create close to 25,000 jobs as we invest in infrastructure. We'll raise over $3 billion, again, to invest in our community.
Good job, guys! Congratulations!
Going to these events creates exposure, and when you're getting exposed, that means you're getting in front of people that you didn't know before. Then you start getting jobs or asked to bid projects, and that's the key to us, our success here in our valley.
A lot of times, when you have a small business out there, they, they want to come, they want to connect, they want to network and grow. A lot of times, they may not know a lot of the different business opportunities that are out there. That's why I'm here today, just kind of, you know, seeing who I can meet and network with so that we can find them. Look at what they're doing, who they're trying to do business with. Kudos to Latin Chamber and NCA for another great event.
Thank you, thank you all, to all of you for allowing us to participate in your council meetings, your board meetings, and, and highlight Infrastructure Week and the importance that infrastructure and development plays in our community, so thanks. Next, I'd like to take some time to recognize the hard work and dedication of Tamara Williams, who retired last week. Tamara was our Senior Director of Human Resources and Safety and Security and served the public for more than 25 years. I have to tell you, I have known Tamara since, for almost all of those 25 years she was working, in fact, all of them. She and I worked at McCarran Airport together when we were very young, and we both luckily ended up at the RTC eventually. Tamara joined the RTC in 2003 and has made great strides with strategic workforce planning and development, employee relations and benefits directly affecting more than our 350 RTC employees. She was instrumental in providing compliance oversight for several federal regulations for several contractors totaling nearly 2,500 personnel. Last year, she received the National Public Employers Labor Relations Association's Award of Excellence, and under her direction, the RTC earned the prestigious Gold Standard Award from the Department of Homeland Security for achieving the highest standards of excellence and security. She has come in here today so that she could say goodbye to you. We'd like to invite her down to accept a plaque. Come on down, Tamara. I have to share with you that Tamara started out as an administrative assistant. She put herself, she was a single mom, put herself through school, got her bachelor's degree, and ended up getting her master's degree as well. So she left the RTC in one of our highest executive-level positions as senior director, so she's a great example of what can be done with determination and hard work.
This is the part I hate, I really hate, but you know, I had a lot of people to influence and inspire me through my career. Tina is one of them, and she said we've worked together for a long time, and as I moved along and up and developed in my professional endeavors, I, it's just been so many supports that I just can't name them all. I did retire last week, the day, my last day, I did get on a plane and flew away for a few days and came back. MJ said, "I must be here," even though I don't work for her anymore, it was hard for me to say no, so I did, I made sure I came back. But I love my RTC family, my team, who's been so supportive of, of me, that, you know, we've had our hard times, we did a lot, we worked hard, but we played hard too. I am enjoying my retirement, I must say, but I do miss everyone, so thank you, thank you so, so much, Tina, for all you've done for me.
Thank you.
Fred, MJ, all of my peers, I won't name them all because there's been so many that's been supportive. Love you, love you, love you.
Love you, Tamara! We have, we have a couple more recognitions. Next, we'd like to recognize our RTC Superstar of the Quarter. Please join me in recognizing this quarter's superstar, Blanca Cervantes! As a custodian in the RTC Facilities Department, Ms. Cervantes tirelessly works to keep seven diverse properties in excellent condition for agencies and employees. Ms. Cervantes receives numerous complaints from staff for going above and beyond in ensuring that all the facilities are well-maintained. She takes the utmost pride in her work while always being personable and flexible when special care is needed. She is a greatly celebrated employee throughout the organization, very well-respected, and always a pleasure to run into in the hallways, so.
Oh my gosh, thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, Tina, thank you, Warren Rich, thank you, my group, thank you, everybody. Oh my God, excited, thank you so much.
Oh, she is so cute. We have a couple more recognitions to share with you. Our next item is to recognize, uh, recognize somebody from our contractor, MV, Mr. Todd Green, who is an MV mechanic. Todd, can you come on down if you're with us? For more than 20 years, Mr. Green has worked through the ranks and made his way up to an A-level mechanic and a powertrain technician. Last fall, MV launched its predictive maintenance program to proactively repair or replace major parts on nearly 200 vehicles. Mr. Green was a contributing factor to the program's success with his specialized mechanical skill set and expert problem-solving tactics. The RTC's own fleet team has complimented Mr. Green repeatedly for being a detail-oriented technician who is the go-to guy when solutions are needed. He's always willing to assist others and ensure vehicles are ready to transport to our customers, so thank you, Todd.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. I say, uh, thanks, everybody, I really appreciate the award.
We have one more. Next up is a special recognition from the RTC. Each quarter, RTC staff selects a contractor who's gone above and beyond in representing the agency. Congratulations to Donovan Morgan from MV Transportation. Donovan, are you with us? Mr. Morgan has been instrumental in launching and staffing the specialized outreach efforts of our onboard project. Mr. Morgan has been the face of the onboard bus and has staffed more than 50 outreaches this year. Despite the long event hours, flexibility, and patience needed with special events, he consistently displays his lively and upbeat personality and is able to answer questions from the public about all RTC projects and initiatives, which is a lot, so well done. So we're proud to have Mr. Morgan as an extension of our team, and we thank him for his services to our community.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to earn and see y'all's vision, and put my thoughts in mind together to provide great service and great help and great opportunity for the community. Thank you.
We have one more, and that, so if you could stand for just one more moment. As a follow-up to National Infrastructure Week, we are continuing our efforts to highlight the importance of public works, and Koshal from our local, Koshal Shaw from our Local American Public Works Association chapter is here to accept a proclamation from our board, for our board, recognizing the National Public Works Week. The RTC and all local jurisdictions recognize the vital role that public works plays in our community, and APWA supports the individuals, agencies, and organizations that plan, build, maintain, and improve communities. The organization's mission is to contribute to a higher and sustainable quality of life for our residents and visitors. So Koshal, it's our pleasure to present to APWA this proclamation in honor of National Public Works Week.
So good morning, it's an honor to be here on behalf of APWA's Southern Branch, and we do appreciate what you guys do for public works. Public works is everywhere. Today, you wake up in the morning, you turn the light on, you turn the faucet on, you go to school, you go to work, it's everywhere. So thank you for your support, and thank you for your vision in the community and, and the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Koshal. We have one more item, General Manager's Report. The RTC hosted a Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, symposium on April 25th to launch an important discussion in Las Vegas about our community's efforts to accommodate expanding economic opportunities. economic opportunities and provide critical mobility for residents and visitors. The event featured former U.S. Secretary of Transportation Anthony Fox, LA Department of Transportation General Manager Celita Reynolds, and other national transportation experts to discuss the importance of transit-oriented development to Southern Nevada's economy, mobility, and quality of life. We'd like to share with you a video that summarizes some of the points from our speakers.
What are we going to accept as the cost of waiting? Personally, we can't. We have to make some decisions, critically important decisions, that are going to impact what this community looks like over the next generation. And many of you in this room today are going to be the stakeholders and the influencers in making that decision.
This region has to figure out how to galvanize and mobilize all of its assets, its people, its economy, its affordability, all aspects of it, and to develop a coherent plan. I have five bits of advice that I want to offer to you today as you think about executing. Public input has to be real. Don't wait too long. It's critical to move as quickly as you possibly can, recognizing what I said at the top about public input. Go big. You have to have some apparatus in place that's going to keep this conversation going and keep the advocacy going. I want to mention inclusion here. There's a marvelous opportunity here to pre-program in affordability, both through zoning, through banking land that can be utilized for that purpose down the road. The permanence of rail in the ground tells the real estate community that that traffic is going to be there forever. And that signal by itself, when coupled with smart zoning and land use decisions and advocacy, is a recipe for revitalizing an area. And you've got an opportunity not only to create a transportation connection, but to create an economic catalyst.
And why I'm actually excited to be here from Denver is that Southern Nevada has an opportunity to leapfrog some of the leaders that you're looking to for examples, that, that you have the, the opportunity to bust out ahead, learn from our, our mistakes, learn from our experience, and actually do things bigger, faster, better than we did them. And that's an incredibly exciting proposition.
Right. The, the real benefit of transit-oriented development is not about the transit trip, it's about the walk trip. That's where the real magic happens, including the bulk of the congestion benefits of transit-oriented development is all about walkability. So, yes, transit-oriented development does need to be near-quality transit, but what it's really about is a walkable mixed-use community where your kids can walk safely to school, where it might be possible for you to, you know, get a quart of milk, where it's not required to get in your car for every single trip.
If we make it a necessity for people to move inefficiently around our cities, we will drown ourselves, right? As we grow, we have to figure out how to solve this geometry problem. And so, what happens when we build these beautiful, amazing neighborhoods is they become expensive because there's so few of them in the community, and there is a large part of the market that will pay a lot of money to live there. Transit does not create gentrification, it does not cause gentrification, but it predicts where gentrification will likely be concentrated unless we do something really, really different. So, how can we rethink that $120 billion investment and actually direct some of it towards the creation and maintenance of affordable housing in and around those transit-oriented communities? So, when you think about transportation and you think about transit, explore and exploit partnerships that give you, that give you the kinds of outcomes that you're really hoping for, right? This is the power of transportation investment. Yes, you have to get people from A to B, but it can be so, so much more than that if you put the framework in place and if you think about it that way.
I would like to thank our board for something that you do for us. The fact that you support us in learning about other communities, the fact that you allow us to organize field trips for us and for stakeholders to other communities, the fact that you encourage us through Southern Nevada's strong directives to bring in speakers from other communities, to bring in people like Secretary Fox to talk to us about what's going on in the world. Every time you allow us to do that, we are smarter in our decision-making. It's very easy to get caught up in your silos, in your own little personal world here in Southern Nevada, right? And think that you know all the answers because you've been here for, in my case, 30 years. But once you get out and you start talking to people outside of your, your agency, your organization, the Salt Lakes, Denvers, Phoenix, LA, you recognize there's a lot that we still have to learn, and every time we touch them and have conversations with them, we come, we become that much smarter in being able to develop our own plans and our recommendations to you, and we become that much more confident in the decisions that we do want to make. And Maryland Parkway is one where increasingly, as I go out and I learn what's going on in the world, I become confident in the recommendations that we'll be bringing forth to you moving forward. One of the strongest messages that I'm hearing as I go out and talk to other communities is one that I otherwise wouldn't have put a lot of thought into had I not gotten out of my own silo and bubble, and that is the concept of inclusion and affordability and making sure that as we invest in things like rail or enhanced bus rapid transit, that we truly are looking at it not just as a transit line, but as a community-building component. And it's very, very different than, than what we otherwise would have done had we not gotten out of our bubbles and moved forward. So, I thank the board for all your support of us and our, the RTC staff in kind of operating outside of our silos sometimes. And that is the conclusion of your General Manager's Report. Next is to receive the, do we have, we have, do not have an N.D. Director today, so we will move on to your consent agenda, which is made up of items 5 through 45, and as mentioned, we will pull item 30 for, for conversation.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
We are going to go now to non-consent items number 48 through 50, and Deputy General Manager MJ Maynard will introduce us.
Thanks, Tina. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, item 48 is to receive a presentation on the Tenet of Budget for the fiscal year 2019. Just to note, the budget has been on record at the RTC and the Clark County Clerk's Office for review by the public since April 12, 2018. Following the presentation, Agenda item 49 is to conduct a public hearing on the Tenet of Budget for fiscal year, which will be followed by Agenda item number 50, where we will ask the board to adopt the final budget for fiscal, fiscal year 2019 and direct the RTC Department of Finance to transmit the final budget as adopted to the Nevada Department of Taxation. And I'll go ahead and turn over to Mark Traust, our Director of Finance, Senior Director of Finance.
Thank you, MJ. We'll start out by talking about our revenues, our funding sources for the RTC. Sales tax remains the largest funding source at 37%. We anticipate collecting about $212 million in fiscal '19 for sales tax. Our 9-cent motor vehicle fuel tax is at about 13%, and our fuel revenue indexing is at 15%, and the new extended fuel revenue indexing is at about 2% or $13 million for fiscal '19. Our fares represent about 11% of our total funding sources, the transit fares, and grants represent about 18% of our funding sources. Our total funding sources are approximately $578 million for fiscal '19. Then we move on and look at sales tax. You can see we've enjoyed increases in sales tax over this, over the many years since 2010. We are kind of leveling off here. In 2016, we had 3.8% increase, and then in '17, a 4.8% increase, and in fiscal '18, we're currently at a 3.9% increase, and we're budgeting a 3.5% increase for 2019. We move on to motor vehicle fuel tax, and the story there is 2%. That's about what the increases have been and what we are budgeting into the future is 2%. The same goes for fuel tax indexing. This is basically turned into a 10-cent fuel tax. The RTC receives about 8.8 cents of that fuel tax, and the county and the other entities, the cities, receive the other portion of that, the 1.2 cents. And again, we're budgeting about a 2% increase in fuel tax indexing, number one, the first one. And then we go to the extension, and this is real, real new in fiscal '18. You can see that we're estimating about $6.6 million in revenues, and in fiscal '19, we're budgeting $13.1 million in fuel tax indexing, the extension. We go to fare revenue, and you can see that that has declined. Through March of 2018, we've had a decrease of 4.5%. We are estimating that '18 will land at about a 5% decrease, according to this graph, and in fiscal '19, we're estimating, or budgeting, a 2% decrease in fare revenue. Large contributor to that decrease has been the decrease on the strip corridor. We, through March, have had a 9.8% decrease in that revenue, and we're estimating that next year, we're actually budgeting next year about a 4% decrease in that revenue. And then we go to expenditures and look at a graph that is our total fund, our uses of our funds, and this graph totals $767 million. You can see that capital outlay comprises the majority of our expenditures at 52%, then contracted services at about 31%, and that's mostly the transit contracts for public transit. Our debt service is at about 12% of our uses. We do pay principal and interest of about $91 million. We will next year. Salaries and benefits make up about 5% of our expenditures. Then we look at capital outlay. You can see that transit is $86.4 million. That's what we're budgeting for fiscal '19. Motor vehicle fuel tax, we're budgeting about $92 million, and FRI 1, we're budgeting 108, and sales tax, about 22 million. And then our newest revenue, FRI 2, we're budgeting about $88 million in expenditures for capital outlay in that new program. We move on to the transit capital budget. We're budgeting $86 million, and about $67 million of that is grant-funded. We're going to buy 50 para-transit vehicles for about $5.7 million, and we're buying several fixed route vehicles, 15 40-footers and 40 60-footers, and those are 85% grant-funded. We're going to continue enhancing our compressed natural gas program in building more compression infrastructure. We're going to spend, we're budgeting about $7.5 million for that. We're also going to be buying bus shelters for about $2.5 million. The compressed natural gas infrastructure will be grant-funded about 90%, and the bus shelters at 80%. We're also adding some improvements to, and upgrades to our two bus yards for about $6.6 million. We're also investing in technology at about $10 million, and those are also about 80% We look at our fixed route contract cost, and you can see that we are budgeting $114 million in fiscal '19, up from about $110 million in fiscal '18. And our para-transit contract cost has been increasing, and we're budgeting about a 5.5% increase in that cost for fiscal '19, which is very consistent with our increases in '17 and '18. And that concludes my prepared remarks. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Comments or questions? Mayor Goodman?
Thank you. Question, is there any plan for bollards in front of the bus stops going in?
Actually, Mayor, we are currently speaking with a, a firm that has, looking at a design. We would look to pilot bollards in different areas throughout the valley, so that, that's something that Tina and I will be bringing to you in the future.
Okay, but not in this budget, then?
It's not in this, well, it...
We haven't specifically planned for them in fiscal '19.
But if there's an opportunity for, you know, we, with our grant money, a lot of, there's a 1% of that, of the formula funding, can be dedicated to safety enhancements, so we have that ability to, to pay for it.
Wonderful. Thank you. I just think it's a great idea, right in front of the stops, every one of them. They only need two, really, just to keep the traffic where it belongs. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No other comments or questions?
Let's see, this is item number 48, that we, which was to receive the presentation, and then next will be, number 49 will be conducting a...
Yeah, you want to open, open for public comment?
So, I'll make a motion now to accept the presentation.
Yeah, public comment first, Mr.?
And I apologize, I was in the back. Did we read all, all the items together?
Yes.
Okay. Then we, we will open the public hearing, those wishing to speak.
Chair Brown, thank you again. Alida Dupree, for the record, today I speak specifically on this budget that is presented before us. It looks good. I'm encouraged about the buying of these 55 new buses, especially 40 60-footers. I'm hoping that we will sign the contract and get them soon, and we can retire the double-deckers off of these residential routes as soon as possible. I am concerned about a decline in fare revenue. I hope that we can, it's a projection, of course, but I hope that we can take steps to bring that up, especially on the strip. And I think part of the reason we're losing fare revenue is, sad to say, the enemy is us. We have two different types of vehicles and setups on the strip, which have different fare policies, and that's, it's a difficult ride for people. You have double-deckers on the Deuce Line, and you have the nicer Strip Express with all doors boarding. People like consistency. I think we're losing some of our rights to the monorail, because I take the monorail and I support it. So, we have to have something in our future budget as we buy vehicles to give people something on the strip that is iconic, because they're not getting these nice new buses on the strip. So, we have to think about this as going forward and learn the lessons from this budget. It's important that we get our fare revenue up and keep CNG going, because when I see a drop in fare revenue, it gets me concerned about whether a general fare increase is in the works. Thank you for not increasing our fares for the last seven or eight years. So, this is good. Let's learn lessons from this and build as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the presentation. And was this considered the public hearing as well?
Yeah.
And then the adoption of the final budget.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission? Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, next we will go back to item number 30, which was requested to be heard, and I'll read the item. Item number 30, to receive a recommendation from the evaluation committee to select an award contract number 18-063, CNG Facilities Management and Maintenance Services, to Trillium Transportation Fuel LLC, DBA Trillium CNG, in the amount not to exceed $3,152,388 from notice to proceed through June 30th of 2022. So four years, is that three years? With two one-year renewal options and authorize the chairman to sign the contract or take other action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you. Counsel, if you would guide us through this, there is, a letter has been received in protest. So would I have the protestant speak and then representatives from Trillium?
Thank you, Chairman. At this time, I think the, yes, we have received a letter dated May 21st, 2018, from Clean Energy. And I think the process going forward would be to request that if Clean Energy, as we know, would like to make a statement, then there can be a rebuttal following.
Derek, you're on. And then Bill, we'll, we'll have you speak after.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman, board members and staff. I'm Derek Turbide, Regional Vice President for Clean Energy. We filed a formal protest of item 30, the recommendation to award contract number 18-063 to Trillium. According to the RFP protest procedures, protests may be filed if a prospective proponent believes there's been a violation of the law. Clean Energy believes that violation of the law may have occurred. We don't think that RTC had any wrongdoing, but a Trillium employee and participant, we understand in this RFP process, is a former Clean Energy employee who in July 2017 resigned to go work for Trillium. As you know, Clean Energy and Trillium are direct competitors. Due to suspicious behavior at the time of his resignation, an investigation began that resulted in Clean Energy discovering evidence that he, among other things, not only downloaded a large volume of confidential files to a flash drive, but also attempted to destroy the evidence when it was requested of him. An investigation into this matter has been underway since it was originally found in August 2017, well before this RFP process began. This is much more than a dispute between Clean Energy and the Trillium employee. His behavior casts a taint on all awards where he has competed against Clean Energy on behalf of Trillium. The details of the issue can be found in our protest letter, which I'm sure you've all received. Our concerns were further heightened when we became aware of the proposed contract in Trillium's, we believe, irresponsible pricing. Trillium's proposed price is about 50, up to 150%, maybe even more, less than any other comparable contracts we're aware of out there. This begs the question, are they making hand over fist profit margins on every other transit agency? Or are they doing this at or below cost, or cutting corners, or something else? Perhaps they're counting on future upgrade work at the facilities to cushion losses. Perhaps, again, it's all of the above. We don't know. Something's got to give, though. We all know how it goes. You get what you pay for, and if something is too good to be true, it most often is. But we aren't talking about hiring somebody to paint a house or cut down a tree. We're talking about taking care of tens of millions of dollars' worth of capital intensive equipment with high horsepower, high pressure, maintenance intensive. It needs to be worked on properly day in and day out for RTC to perform its, its core function, which is to move people every day. This contract requires three local technicians with years of experience and the requisite licenses to do business here. Unlike Clean Energy, as six local stations and customers aside from RTC and all the requisite licenses, Trillium has no local presence that we're aware of. In fact, we believe they've subcontracted a local one-man shop or flown people in to respond to ongoing issues that have plagued the stations since they got involved with the recent upgrade project. This contract starts in a month and a half, and it doesn't seem like there's a real solid plan or responsible way to move forward at this point. I asked another prominent company in our industry, why didn't you guys bid this project? It was just us and Trillium. He said the contract was too short, it's four years, four base years with two one-year options. He said the risk in the startup costs were way too high, and his closest technician was in Reno. Now, looking back on it, I say at least you had a technician in the state. RTC stations are among the largest in the country. This contract starts in a month, process is tainted, and their price is half of what they charge other customers. The whole thing just doesn't seem to make sense. Clean Energy's worked with the RTC for 10 years. We serve the majority of transit agencies throughout the country, and you guys have always been of the utmost ethics and professionalism, and we couldn't say enough good things about your staff or your executive management. Unfortunately, we believe staff's hands was tied on this one. With such a low price factor in, it was nearly impossible for the proposed award to go any other way, the way we see it. However, the award was recommended before staff was aware of all the facts. So I appreciate your reconsider, your reconsideration of this item today and be happy to answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. How are you? Good morning, members of the board, staff. My name is Bill Zobel. I'm the Vice President of Business Development, Marketing and Customer Care for Trillium. It's a pleasure to be here today. Trillium is a member of the Love's family of companies. Love's was ranked number 17 on the Forbes list of largest privately held companies in the U.S. in 2017, with over $15 billion in revenue. Our company is financially strong and committed to our very large base of customers. Our proposal to provide services for maintenance and operation of RTC's two compressed natural gas stations was thorough, contained a plan to provide RTC the best available service in the industry and a transition plan to achieve those goals. We understand that RTC has customers that rely on them every day, and we're here to make sure that happens. Our proposal contained information related to our qualifications and experience in performing similar work in more than 40 transit properties across the United States, including New York City's MTA, San Antonio's VIA, Boston's MBTA, Orange County's OCTA, just to name a few. We also have extensive experience in taking over existing transit properties like this one. Some of our recent wins include San Diego, Riverside, Arlington, and Tampa's Hart, among several others. All were done with great success, resulted in improved system performance, and we're done with the highest levels of customer satisfaction to this day. It's important to note that Trillium recently completed a CNG station upgrade for RTC. We were selected for this some time ago. As such, we are intimately familiar with the CNG fueling equipment that's here on site, and we are responsible for any warranty work associated with the installation of that In summary, Trillium won this bid based on its merits. We offered RTC the best overall value. This includes price, experience, and our technical qualifications throughout the entirety of Trillium's team. We support and appreciate the staff's recommendation and look forward to moving ahead and serving the needs of RTC. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And before, Mr. Zobel and Mr. Turbide, if you could stay close, let's first have some questions of the board to staff and legal, and then if we have questions directed, either representative will, will do that then. So please, you'd have a seat close by the podium, and then we'll start. Mayor?
I, I do have a number of questions, because obviously this came in as a low bid, probably significantly lower than we would have expected it to come in as a competitive bid. And it looks to me as though it's someone trying to enter the market, and so they're willing to throw in a low bid. That being said, how are they making that up? How are they, are they looking at reducing the level of services? Are we going to have the same three employees or, and what's the salary range that we're looking at for those employees? Will they be paid at the same level that they were paid at working for, for the other company and not Trillium? What's the total revenues that, that Trillium is expecting to, to get from this contract? Obviously, they're, they're bidding significantly lower, so what's their revenue going to be? Are they going to experience losses? You know, I have, I have a number of questions, and in terms of performance standards and outcomes, is our community going to get the same level of service at the same quality that we received previously? And will, will the compensation to the employees who will be working for us be the same? And will those three employees be housed here in Southern Nevada, or will they be somewhere else? Could you have conceivably one employed here and then two out of town? So I think there's a lot of questions I've, I've thrown at you, but I just want to make sure that the level of service is the same level of service that we've come to expect in the CNG service.
Let's break those down, and I, I think they're similar to some of the conversations we've had in our briefings. So first is the pricing on the bid. Would you, Counsel, would you speak to that?
Sure, sure, and I'll attempt to maybe frame this up a little bit for the, for the benefit of the board. With regard to the competitive process that, that Trillium and Clean Energy went through, there was a process that involved evaluating the best value for the award. So with regard to what we're here to do today, I just would, it's, while it may be enticing to negotiate, that we're not here to negotiate the agreement. And with regard to what the bidders have to present, they do not have a legal obligation to present things that they not, would not otherwise been obligated to present at the time of the bid. So with regard to, to pricing, staff went through an evaluation as to pricing, as to scope. Both scopes are the same. The, the expectations concerning performance are the same. The contract that both parties are expected to sign, they're the same. And so with regard to confidence with, you know, as to how each party would, would be able to perform, that was something that staff evaluated in making, or rather, the team that evaluated these two bids, they took those things into consideration for their ultimate recommendation.
So in that agreement, was there a statement that there would be three full-time employees located here?
If, if there's, if there's someone that can speak to the actual scope, if that addresses your concerns, I think we can go ahead and do that.
MJ, MJ's probably the most knowledgeable of the contract. Fred?
The contract stipulates the employee requirements, and it requires that they have three people here to do the work. It also has requirements as to the performance that will be expected of them, and then it has liquidated damages if they cannot perform, based on the requirements in the contract. So that's all spelled out. And then we also have, in addition to the LDs, we also have termination clauses in case they, after that, they can perform, we can institute termination after that.
Okay.
So, so in terms of the employees, yes, the contract calls for the three employees.
Locally, locally, not to be two out of town and one local. Okay, and then...
And if I may, just to stay on that subject, so the, when you say they're here, they're local employees, and in the contract, did it not call out as far as a response time?
It does. In fact, if you have the contract with you, page is 32 of 50 of the contract, I'm going to read a portion for you. It says, "The contractor service technicians are to be available within two hours of call out on site, 24 hours per day, seven days per week, for the duration of the O and M contract."
And these technicians, technicians that are called out in the contract, are they certified? Do they have some level of certification?
I believe so. There were requirements under this performance of the contract in terms of line senses, and the contract calls for all of that.
So my, one question, too, about total revenues. I mean, they could be losing money on this contract. This could be a loss leader, and it's really not our responsibility to, if they choose to bid low and lose money, that's sort of a business decision they've made?
With regard to pricing, it's up to the bidders and as to how they choose to price. If, if, if that ends up being an amount that is detrimental to them, that is, that's for them to bear the risk associated with that decision.
So my concern, too, then, would be that at some point in the future, they decide to come back and put pressure on us to try to renegotiate that agreement. They, there's no responsibility on our part to renegotiate that agreement to, during the terms of the contract. Is that correct?
That is correct. If there's a performance issue, then the rights and remedies that are in the contract would be exercised. If I, if any party fails to perform, there is no obligation for us to, you know, unilaterally or by virtue of an ask to provide them with a change order to increase the contract sum.
And if they, at some point, chose to just reduce the level of service to us or not provide the same level that we've come to expect, are there performance standards that allow us to go back on them?
Yes, there are. There, there's a, a whole host of remedies that allow us to protect the RTC, to impose penalties on the contractor if they fail to adhere to the scope requirements, and there's no impediment for us to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Goodman?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. There are a couple, I think it's more comments, but really for the public to understand. I think while we have an obligation as a commission to understand and know this, we really do rely on legal and staff of RTC to be involved in all RFPs to the details. And so what we end up with is what your recommendation would be. And I do want to thank Clean Energy for the decade that you've served so well on this, and welcome Trillium, and look forward to the future. There are a couple of questions, which really probably go to staff here and legal. The oversight, because this is a new, new contract for these four years with the one year, two one-year options, is that correct? Where's the oversight? I mean, we're transitioning, and almost in every RFP that's awarded, and if a new entity comes in to take over, where's the oversight? And not casting any doubt on the quality of the company that was chosen, but where is that oversight? So we're not waiting and six months in before we're very far underwater with the quality of service that Mayor Marsh should talk to.
Yeah, we have a contracting officer who is overseeing this. In addition, you have two backups who will be assigned to each of the two sites to oversee the work that is being performed on a day-to-day basis. And in case there are any issues, they will flag that, bring it to our attention and to the attention of the contractor to fix. If they don't, then we have remedies under the contract to pursue.
So how do you transfer immediately in July from one entity to the other, assuring that all buses are serviced appropriately and supplied?
There's a transition period where Trillium staff and Clean Energy staff would overlap briefly during the turnover period.
And oversight during that by staff of RTC?
Of RTC, correct.
And they respond back to, to you?
Yes.
Okay.
They respond back to the executive management.
Okay, I think, it was just, I mean, we're dealing with facts that we have and that were given to us, and the process has to be legitimate process. The vetting, and it has to be a level playing field on, on all RFPs. So I think, given that, and being assured by staff that this impact occurred, and with the built-in checks and balances that are in the contract, I don't know beyond that, Mr. Chairman, where we have anything other than to follow recommendations, unless there's a reason. Is there, I gather in RFPs, they're, they're generally just set and approved once the contract is suggested by staff. There's not an appeal process, or it has been made because of the letter with the employee from Clean Energy?
Maybe it would benefit just to kind of go up a little bit and go to a 2,000 or 20,000 foot level to talk about the process. The RFP process sets forth a number of rules that, that all parties follow. The Clean Energy letter submitted on May 21st, while it includes facts which, which may or may not be persuasive, really does not address any of the process that was the RFP process itself. And I, I think it, it should be said that whatever the decision of the board is today, it's not to validate or invalidate necessarily Clean Energy's position vis a vis a former employee, which is what this letter really speaks to. So as it stands today, that there has, there's been no criticism of the actual evaluation process itself. And as a result of that, it really does not empower staff or the RTC board to unwind or to be critical of the, of the process. So what we have today is we have, we have this letter, we have a protest. They may or may not have a grievance against their former employer, employee. If they do, perhaps they should pursue it. Who knows what's actually occurring outside of the RFP process? of the RFP process. So as of today, we took an objective evaluation of the process itself. I was not involved in the process. I was not on the selection committee. And ultimately, it's my responsibility to evaluate the sanctity of the administrative law that applies to this. And the administrative law that governs how this process unfolds is not the same law that Clean Energy is mentioning in its presentation and/or alluding to in its letter. So, you know, where we are as a staff, we have a recommendation to proceed, and we have no reason to unwind that recommendation at this point in time.
Well, realizing that it has to be truth and validity in how the process was run. But if, in fact, they on a private basis were to find out there had been some piece of the process because of information leaking from one to the other that made a difference, if that should happen, and that is done separately by the private entity, what is their recourse? They just wait for the next RFP opportunity in four or five years? Or do they have any recourse back to the process and the RFP? If, in fact, it substantiated, they found that information that they hold as confidential is given to an opposing bidder that was used to help persuade the evaluative committee to award it?
Mayor, their recourse is to continue to compete for contracts as they're let, and they may do so without impediment. With regard to the process that went into this evaluation, their recourse is to do exactly what they did. It is to submit this letter, which they did. And the difficulty that we are having with the letter is, although it's interesting, it is not, it does not directly speak to the process at all. And accordingly, we're unable to infuse, we're unable to suppose things that would be outside of what the process would require.
So your recommendation to us is, it is as though this doesn't exist, really? That the process was valid, the RFP was conducted legally and without flaw, and this is for the company itself, but not for us to take into consideration?
That is correct. I think it would be an error to do so, and I believe that even this discussion is part of their remedy and their process. And on its face, giving it the benefit of all doubts, this letter, not even in the most favorable light to Clean Energy, calls into question the process that was engaged in at all.
And one last thing, if I might, Mr. Chairman. From the vantage point of the RTC, its management and direction, as far as the past decade of service from Clean Energy, they have, in fact, done a very good job. And it just, there was no cause for anything. This was just a process, a legal process through which we went.
Mayor, this should have no negative reflection, candidly, on either party that's involved in this, and I think...
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
Councilman?
Counsel, if you could just address real quickly on this bidding process. If we can't find a flaw in the actual RFP process, if we would, even though skeptical as we may be, if we would reject this, we would become in jeopardy, a violation of the practice of the RFP. So then we would become, as RTC, liable for potential action against us if we didn't accept that.
That is, thank you for the question. It's loaded with all types of legal issues. I appreciate that. That question was a full-time employment act for me. I will try to address it as simply as possible. There is no basis to deviate from the process at this point in time. My recommendation is to proceed with the agenda item as it's recommended, and I think we would be going outside the boundaries of what we're lawfully allowed to do, should we give this letter, as it's been received, any weight.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? To summarize, I guess, the key issues, the protest letter addresses an issue that is outside the purview of our RFP process.
That's correct.
And there's no protest on record as far as the process or how the process was conducted.
That is also correct.
And the pricing, it's a benefit to the RTC, but for a private sector to bid on a public project, we don't control if they want to come in as, I think, a loss leader or get into the market. That, again, is beyond our purview as far as the evaluation process.
That is correct.
Very good. We'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Motion on the floor to follow staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, your next item is item number 46, which is to receive a presentation on the development of the Transportation Investment Business Plan, or TIBP, recommendations.
If I could, hold on. Let's take...
Item 47?
47.
Okay. Item number 47 is to receive an update on the RTC's Americans with Disabilities Act, paratransit peer review study, and the ADA paratransit service area requirements, and direct staff accordingly. And with us, we have Mr. Tony Anderson, who has been our go-to guy for over 20 years as it relates to ADA issues, to give you a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, just before we turn it over to Mr. Anderson, I'd like, just to set the stage for the purpose of this presentation, we've had many good presentations before from the public with concerns over ADA issues and the expansion of the service area. What we undertook in response to those comments and concerns was to discuss with Mr. Anderson his ability to make a presentation today. Mr. Anderson has been serving as outside counsel for RTC directly on ADA paratransit issues for the better part of 20-plus years?
27 years.
27 years. Mr. Anderson has been through the expansion, contraction of the service areas. He's home office in Washington, DC, and spends a great deal of his time on these issues. So I think the key here for us today is to make sure that everyone understands not only the nuances surrounding this issue, which is an important issue to the RTC, but also to understand the legal landscape of what RTC can and can't do, and where the challenges are. Not in an effort to put up roadblocks necessarily, but just to leave the public and this board with an understanding of what we have to confront beyond some of the things that have been discussed to date. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. And thank you, Commission, for having Mr. Chairman and the commissioners for having me here. It's been a while. I want to give a little more background on me so you get a sense of how I come to ADA issues. I started my career at the Department of Transportation, one of my areas of the US Department of Transportation. One of my areas of focus was, at the time, elderly and handicap transportation. So it was a natural transition, once the ADA was enacted, to focus on ADA-related issues. I've been in private practice for 30 years. I represent transit authorities across the country on ADA compliance issues, and I serve as the current chair of the Aptile Legal Affairs Committee. So that's just a little bit of background. We're here today to talk about the service area requirements of the ADA. So let's start with the statute. And I will say that I may have less time than I have slides. You have an entire slide deck. I've written it so you can refer to it at a later time if we don't cover specific areas. If you have any questions, please interrupt me and ask, and that will be good. The Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted in 1990 to provide a clear and comprehensive mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. An important part of the ADA, and it impacts service area issues, it impacts pretty much all aspects of the ADA, is it's a civil rights statute. It's not just a statute that Congress passed. They set it up as a civil rights act, which means that it follows certain requirements from a legal standard, in terms of implementation, in terms of what can be done and what can't be done. There are five agencies primarily responsible for ADA implementation. The EEOC handles labor-related issues, employee issues. Department of Justice actually handles an umbrella requirement for all public and private entities with a significant carve-out for transportation. When the act was enacted, Congress realized immediately that transportation was integral to accessibility. If you couldn't get from point A to point B, it didn't matter that all the facilities in public services or private services were accessible if you couldn't get there. So half of Title III and half of Title II of the ADA are devoted to transportation issues. The fourth agency is the Federal Communications Commission, and they work primarily on telephonic communication issues. And the access board is the last. And the access board sets the framework for what is accessible, how wide a door has to be, how a vehicle is designed so a mobility device can get onto a vehicle, those types of issues. There are four tiers to, at least four tiers, to ADA compliance. One is the direct statutory language. A more helpful tool is the regulations published by USDOT to implement the regulations. That gives us a little more indication of what we're required to do. And then the next tier is the Federal Transit Administration, which you all know is a division of the Department of Transportation, and that's a division that's been tasked with handling ADA issues specifically in transit. And FTA achieves ADA compliance by conducting triennial reviews, enhanced ADA reviews. When they get complaints from passengers, from customers and transit authorities, they go through an entire system on their own to see what's happening or to try to understand what's happening. And they will, if they uphold a complaint, ask the transit, not ask, tell the transit authority to come into compliance. And then they have just general enforcement actions. And then the last step, and this is an important one, because in service area, this is where we really start. It's the transit agencies' policies and procedures within the framework of the regulations and the statute and all the other requirements. The regulations are set out in Part 37 of Title 49. I have a copy here if anyone wants to look at the book for any reason. And the guidance from FTA comes in two primary forms now. As of 2015, FTA published a circular, which is about this thick, which goes into the details of ADA compliance. So if you have a particular issue, you can go to that circular and have a framework for how to address it. Sometimes the direct answer is going to be in that guidance, and that's been very helpful. It took 25 years of the act for FTA to issue that circular, and we're glad that it's here. Another thing, another way that FTA handles ADA compliance issues is letters of finding. And they make these letters public to everyone so that if transit authority XYZ has an issue that's a violation, there may be a letter of finding that's issued so that all other transit authorities are on notice that that's how they should be handling something. And then there's compliance reviews, which are also public. So as of today, you can go on to DOT's website and find 15 compliance reviews in the last three years of transit authorities that, including RTC, of transit authorities that have had to deal with compliance issues. We're here because of paratransit, and I'm pointing that out because there are ADA requirements for fixed route. But right now, we're here for paratransit. So what is paratransit? Complementary paratransit service is service designed to provide transportation to individuals who are not capable of using fixed route service on a regular basis. So the bus and, in this case, monorail, or any other mode of transportation that you have on a fixed route basis. DOT identified six criteria areas to focus on. The statute does as well. Service area, which we'll talk about. Response time, I'm just going to tell you what response time is. When someone calls up for a reservation, and they can call up to the day before the service, RTC has to be able to provide service or commit to provide service to that individual within a timeframe of one hour before a request and one hour after a request. So I call up today and say, "I want a pickup at 7:00 tomorrow morning." RTC, assuming I'm eligible, RTC has to be able to give me a trip sometime between 6:00 in the morning and 8:00 in the morning to get me where I'm going. If they don't, it's a trip denial and a civil rights violation, and it carries a fair penalty when you have a history of denials. A single denial here and there is not going to be problematic. But if you have a series of denials, you have an issue. Fares, the fares for paratransit can only be twice what the fares for fixed route is. So if the basic fare is $150, the paratransit fare can only be $3.00. This is significant in most transit, for most transit authorities, because the average cost of a paratransit ride runs between $40 and $42.00. And so that, and the average cost of a fixed route ride would run $1.60 or so. So there's a huge margin. And hours of service have to be the same. Oh, there's no trip purpose restrictions. So if you're going to a casino, or you're going to the doctor, you're still eligible in the same way. The hours of service have to be the same, and the denials are in the capacity constraint issues. Service area has to be 3/4 of a mile of your bus routes, and if you were to have a rail system, it would be a wider area, but you don't have a rail system, so it's 3/4 of a mile. That does not include your commuter bus system. So to the extent that you have commuter bus, that does not influence your paratransit service area. When RTC first implemented paratransit in 1994, the commission decided to make the entire county the service area. It didn't take long to realize that that may have been an overreach. And so through multiple years, the commission cut back the service area to more accurately match the statutory requirements. Not in that first cutback, not when you first went from the pole county, but in subsequent reductions. What the commission did is they grandfathered individuals who had been eligible in the unreduced service area. So those individuals continued to be served. That's significant because there has to be a justification for why you're providing service outside of your service area. As recipients of a benefit under a civil rights, those individuals had some due process rights to be served, and RTC made the decision, which FTA would support, to provide service to those individuals. I'm going to skip through a couple of these in the interest of time. Okay. So right now we have a paratransit service area that pretty much matches what the statutory requirements are. If RTC were to expand the service area, the RTC would have to go through a public process to do that, go through a fair amount of analysis, make sure that when you are expanding, you're spending in a logical way that is not disadvantaging certain individuals or certain groups... of individuals versus other groups of individuals. So, you couldn't, for instance, say, "We're going to pick this particular geography to expand into," without taking into account whether there are similar geographies with, reasonably proximate to your current service area. And you can't unilaterally extend. You really will have to follow a process. Okay. As for service to a particular individual, let's take the hypothetical situation of an individual who would be ADA-eligible but who lives outside of the service area. Let's say, for purposes of this hypothetical, it's not far from outside the service area, but outside the service area. That individual wants to be served. There is no way, no legitimate way, under the ADA, for the commission to extend service to that individual as ADA paratransit service. You really would have to go through and look at a geography, a process for expanding the entire service, and any individual similarly situated to that individual would have to be provided service. So, you could not cherry pick and say, "Well, this is a circumstance where we've decided we're going to expand for this individual." That would undoubtedly lead to problems, maybe not with that individual, but with other people similarly situated. One of the issues that come up, that has come up in multiple transit authorities, is people who are outside the service area who said, "Well, you now have to give me a reasonable modification to your policy. I live two blocks outside of the service area. You can make a reasonable modification and reach me." DOT anticipated that that type of request would be asked, and specifically indicated that transit authorities do not have to operate outside of their service areas or outside of their operating hours, because that is not a reasonable modification. That's a fundamental alteration of the service provided by the entity. Why do we focus on service area? Because there is a basic requirement to provide service, ADA service, in that area. It's statutorily required. It can lead, the failure to do that can lead to enforcement actions at DOT, can lead to enforcement actions at DOJ, and parts of the Americans with Disabilities Act are enforceable by individuals who are adversely impacted. The statute and the regulations say that you can't have capacity constraints. So, if you were to expand your service area, you have to be prepared to provide service to everyone in that service area who would be eligible. One of the, we've faced capacity constraints issues previously where FTA has come back to RTC and says, "You can't do this." We used to have a two-hour window, saying, "If you scheduled one trip, you couldn't schedule the next trip for two hours." The logic in that is that we didn't want people to miss their second trip because of how paratransit works. If your first trip delivers you at the end of a window, you might not be ready for the second trip, so you would have a no-show. So, we set up something that made a lot of sense, and FTA said, "Well, you can't do that." I'm pointing this out because FTA really does look at how you act in a way that might lead to capacity constraints. There are several areas where FTA says, "It's not enough to just provide service. You have to provide good service. You can't have a significant amount of untimely pickups, of missed trips, of late trips, of too-long trips." All of those are factors that directly impact your service area. If you expand your service area, you're going to increase the chances that you're going to run afoul of some of these other items. And I won't go through what a trip denial is or what a missed trip is. So, the service area does directly impact the capacity constraint requirements. Now, I've said a lot of things instead of pretty quickly in trying to get through this in a timely way, but I would invite any questions that any of you have, and I would welcome those.
Thank you. Mayor Goodman.
Chairman, thank you. One question you mentioned that is the area, the bigger area was reduced back down.
Yes.
Those who were previously being served in the outer area will be grandfathered in. Did you not say that?
I did say that, but I want to clarify, when the service area was the full county?
Yes.
And RTC made the decision to reduce?
Yes.
There was no grandfathering in that first reduction. There's been subsequent reductions, and there were grandfathering in those subsequent reductions.
Thank you. You've answered it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, let's open this up to the speakers that...
Could I ask a question?
Yes. Councilwoman, please.
You did a good job. That's very complicated. I know a little bit about ADA, and it's very complicated. My question is, what if you had the larger area of pickup, and then you reduce the area of pickup? What's the reasonable factor pertaining to those now that wouldn't be picked up because they're not in that area?
Well, if you reduce the, if you reduce the area, FTA and DOT and DOJ would permit you to stop serving those people who were in the previous area, but they also would support a grandfathering situation. And I want to explain what the grandfathering was, because it was very specific. What RTC did is said to people who were eligible, "As long as you stayed at that same address." So, you were losing service for absolutely nothing you did. You were eligible, you stayed at the same address, we will provide you service." That's what RTC said. If we had individuals who either moved out of the service area into a previously served area, those individuals were not eligible.
So, it would depend on the location of your home, if it was in the service area originally, and then if you moved out?
Yes.
That's a question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? I have a number of public comment cards, and this time, I'd like to invite Kenneth Tatcher to the podium to speak. Is he here? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record. We have three minutes.
It's an honor to be here speaking in front of you again.
Would you state your name and address?
My name is Kenneth Tatcher, for the record. Good morning. My name is Kenneth Tatcher. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here to support the restoring of the service area to where it was in 2011. I have some dear friends who have some powerful testimony. Please listen to them. They have, their, they can, their kids can get to their appointments or grocery store or things independently. Please listen to the testimony and consider it today and support and restore the service area to the way it was in 2011. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kenneth. Next is Rita Barney. If you'll state your name for the record.
I have some comments here.
Thank you.
My name's Rita Barney. This is the third time testifying in front of this committee for the need of an extended service area for paratransit. If you remember, I'm the mother of a 28-year-old daughter who lives at home and will continue to live there for as long as my health allows. We built our forever home with her independence and long-term safety in mind. How many of you ever had to say that out loud, "For as long as my health allows"? Since both my husband and I are both cancer survivors, perhaps it has a deeper meaning to me. We live 1/4 mile outside the current paratransit service area, and this requires my daughter completely relying upon my husband and myself, because we have no extended family around here. Independence, a simple task you might have taken years or months for them to accomplish. Traveling independently is a celebration moment. How many of you here sit today with a full schedule when you leave this meeting, if you haven't already, will jump into your car and rush to your next appointment, lunch, dinner, or your next practice session for election debates? There is a population of people who are sitting at home, wondering how they are going to get to their appointments this week, how they're going to pick up their medications or groceries. They don't even dream of a real social life when there are lunch and dinner plans. In my previous testimony, I called attention to the thousands of residents in master-planned communities and 55-and-over communities, clinics, healthcare VA facilities, schools, shopping centers, all of these outside the paratransit service area. Not every resident will have a need, but there is still plenty who do. People are moving to these areas every day. There are residents in these areas that you are excluding. You are knowingly excluding a whole population. I've listened to others who expressed the need for transportation, and you talk about tourists. You have taken potential employment opportunities for some, real employment for others, and asked a family to now stop what they're doing in the middle of the day to drive their family member. Uber and Lyft are not a solution for every paratransit need. You have not listened to the individual families that have stated their needs. They are explaining and putting information out there that is not legally necessary, just trying to make you understand. I thought the process of public testimony was approaching this committee with individual stories who might impress the need and give voice to those not being heard. Are you listening? Your own symposium emphasized public input and inclusion. There has been no discussion, no actions expanding the service area. Your solution seems to be spending an unknown amount of money on a peer review study, when so much has been presented to you already and information so readily available. Obviously, there was a need enough that you made a deal with Uber and Lyft, and even that program doesn't apply to all. You know exactly how many homes have been planned, where they are being built, and waterways planned. You knew before they moved in. Your job is to be completely informed, so if spending thousands of dollars and using months to determine the need is real, then I do hope August is really your time for doing something. Your job is to listen to the public. When you leave early in the meetings and miss public testimony and information dealing with an important issue to them, I hope you take home that pile of paper and testimony and sit and really go through it, or listen to the recorded record. To me here, three months later, I question how serious this agenda item has really been anyone beyond the writers who need the service. Extending the service area would have helped and included so many individuals already. At the top of your work chart, duty should be taking care of people that live in the same community you live in. It isn't the tourists that live here that vote, it's the residents. Perhaps the voices need to get louder.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner Brown, commissioners. My name is Robin Kincaid, and I, as Rita Barney have testified in the past, I'm also a parent of a daughter who uses paratransit services on a very regular basis, and she's 26. And she is currently using it to go to college and to work, and really, this is essential for her developing her independent life. I wanted to call to your attention a coordinated public transit human services transportation plan that the RTC purchased. That was, it was provided to the commission back in June of 2008. Yes, 10 years ago. That plan stated numerous recommendations and lots of information, and discussed about the transportation disadvantage model. Of course, since passing of the ADA, we know that the offering of the fixed transit route with a regular basis, and of course, improving accountability to people with disabilities, and by using the fixed route fleet fully accessible, it needed to be a system that really works for people with disabilities. It also noted that as the valley continues to grow, and we've seen a lot of growth in the last 10 years here, that that fixed route and the paratransit and other IAS specialized services would also have to grow to accommodate the demand for transportation services. Those recommendations were not adopted back in 2008, or even carried forward, and now we're embarking on another study. Persons with disabilities, like my daughter, are looking for equity in how dollars are spent on transportation. Why can we spend unlimited resources in providing free transportation to tourists or people that visit our town on a very temporary basis or on light rail, but we cannot provide services to the many individuals with disabilities and also these communities that have been developed, that are part of the Las Vegas culture for individuals that are over 55? These individuals that live in communities that are designated as an over-55 community were never, ever going to be able to demonstrate the need for a fixed route system due to their age, their mobility, have its nose, the heat sensitivity, and in some instances, maybe they're also having difficulties with memory or possibly an onset of dementia. This means that there's too many residents and voters that cannot leave the house, but the persons who ride paratransits cannot even visit these people.
Continue.
Who reside outside of that service area. The current website, if we go to the RTC website right now, it indicates that there is an annual review for service expansion. But when was this last evaluation ever done? And when will the public see that evaluation? We're asking that you expand the service area in an equitable manner so that you meet the needs of all your constituents. I also want to call your attention to the University of Florida for the urban transportation research, and it discusses the standards and the best practices that transportation systems must adopt when expanding a fixed service area. So, the addition of private preschools, daycares, churches, hospitals, doctors' offices, and other census data must be considered when doing an evaluation for the expansion so that persons with disabilities can achieve employment and access a place of worship or need healthcare appointments. I've told you in previous testimony, my daughter cannot go to her church via paratransit. So, if I'm ill or my family members are ill, she is not able to do that, because her church, which has been there over 20 years, is still not in the service area. I also want to discuss, and I will close with this portion here, the FTA ADA paratransit compliance review audit that was just completed, and it's dated April 2018. I don't know if the commissions had a chance to review that, but there are multiple findings that were noted in that audit. We're asking that a response and corrective action plans to address those findings be placed on the June agenda. Addressing these findings creates a path to improve on areas such as eligibility, determination, excessive trip lengths, and suspension policies. Once again, we have another study, and instead of adopting or making changes per recommendations from this audit, we're actually paying for a...
Thank you. Stephanie.
My name is Stephanie Vrsnek, and I'm speaking before you for the sixth time. Every time, my message has been the same: Restore the service area to the pre-recession service area. I believe that this commission values the light rail project, tourism, bringing new businesses to our city, more than meeting the needs of people with disabilities. People with disabilities are a vital part of our community, and they should be a priority of this commission above the light rail project and tourism. I don't understand how we can be a leader for many years in going above and beyond in providing services for people with disabilities by going one and a half miles outside the service area, then shrinking the service area in 2011, and not restoring it back to the community. Clearly, your priorities have changed, and I'm very disappointed. My situation is not unique. I know other parents in similar situations. Unfortunately, they cannot be here today. It is clear to me that I am, that I am going to be, that I am not going to be able to solve this through the commission. I feel my next step would be to get elected officials, the media, or the newspaper involved to help me resolve this. Christian and I are members and taxpayers and registered voters of this community. As a mom, we all want our children to be independent as possible. Christian has no other means of transportation. There is no family or friends to transport him when I'm no longer here. Paratransit is his only option. The American with Disabilities Act was designed to protect the rights of people with disabilities, to give them access to transportation. I am very proud of Christian. He has held a federal job for over 15 years, and against all odds, he has accomplished more than most people. He deserves this. It's his right. And I believe there's a simple solution: Restore the service area to the pre-recession service area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
I think we have one more speaker.
Oh, okay.
Havanda Davis.
I am Havanda Davis, and as, as like everyone else, I've come a few times to express my views on the service area. As a person with a disability, I believe that we have the right to be able to travel around our community without hindrance. There are so many people who need our service, who rely on our service to, to be able to be a viable part of the community. I just think that it's more than fair to help them be better persons in the community. We all know that the ADA standard is just the minimum of what you guys can do. You guys can do more if you choose to do more. Why not choose to do better for persons with disabilities? Thank you.
Thank you. So as a discussion item, this is our, our chance as a board to ask questions, and some of the things that we were limited to the old public comment timeframe. And we'll start, Councilwoman.
The last couple of speakers said restore to the previous level of service that we had, but we were told that anybody who had been receiving that could be grandfathered in. Am I misunderstanding that?
No, you are entirely correct, Councilwoman.
Could somebody, whoever spoke up, come to the mic so I can hear?
Councilwoman, I think, and I, Stephanie, if you could come up. I think my understanding was Stephanie's son, Stephanie's daughter was inside the service area. So the son was brought to the daughter's home, which was eligible.
Yes.
Back and forth from Nellis, was that the situation?
Yes, that, that was in my first testimony. He was going to my daughter's home. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, she left the state and is no longer here. So there is no other place that Christian can go because she no longer lives there.
And I remember that from the previous conference presentations that you've made here. However, what I'm asking is, did he move out of the service area then? He moved out of the service area, is that correct?
We moved into a new home in 2013. So before that, he was getting services.
Why couldn't he, if he's still in the service area, why couldn't he be grandfathered in? Because he's no longer in the service area or in what was the previous service area?
He, he was in a previous service area, but when we bought our new home in 2013, that was outside the service area.
So that's what I'm trying to understand. Okay, so he moved out of the service area that was previously in existence, and he no longer then was eligible. I understand now, thank you.
And, and so, if, if I can just say that back in 2011, when the service area was a mile and a half, and when it was shrunk in 2011, there was two reasons that it was shrunk. And one of them was our economy, and the second was the Medicaid patients was not getting transportation because of the budget cuts, so they were using paratransit, which the ridership increased. So those two reasons do not exist today. Our economy is booming, and Medicaid patients are getting transportation. So it's always been my message on why cannot, why we can't restore the service area the way it was back in 2011. That is my question.
But the RTC, we did, the RTC did offer to give you Lyft or something like that, right?
Yes, but you can't get Lyft or Uber on Nellis Air Force Base.
Even if you go through a special, okay. And that's where your home is now? Oh, that's where he works?
That's where he works, yes.
Thank you.
Could I just say something?
Please.
Fun? I see Kenneth Tatcher, who was here, and Kenneth, I've known since he was a very small young boy. I watched him play baseball. I watched him come up through all those leagues, and I just want to say I'm very proud of you, Kenneth. I'm proud that you're here utilizing government resources. I just wanted to say, and it was through hard work, through his parents, by the way, and he.
Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wonder if, Mr. Anderson, who's the expert on ADA and transit and transportation, you've listened to the comments that have been made by representatives from the public expressing concern about the expansion of the service area, and I wonder if maybe you could provide us with some feedback based on what you've heard and, and what you believe we can and cannot do.
Okay. The, a, a reality in an urbanized area is that no matter where you set your boundaries, there's going to be people outside those boundaries, there are going to be people inside the boundaries. What RTC did is go through a process of balancing how to address those issues, and that the whole concept of grandfathering, how it was approached, was attempt, an attempt to do that. If the RTC were to expand its fixed route service, so if you start sending bus routes into communities that are not currently served, there would be a legal obligation at that point to extend the paratransit area to match those, those extensions of fixed route. The, one of the primary reasons for contracting the service area for paratransit was the issue of denials, missed trips, and service quality because the service area was, was geographically larger than, than RTC could provide service. So it's, it's, that was a primary driver in, in the decision process to, to get closer to the statutory limits.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that Mayor here?
Mayor Goodman, my apologies.
I'm kidding you. Couple of things, and they're both questions, I guess, for you, Mr. Anderson, or maybe mine, for Tina. As Medicaid, as we're looking to try to expand service Medicaid, could that in fact help in these instances or not?
Well, I don't, I can't give you a yes or a no on that, but I will tell you that, that RTC is frequently, constantly going through the exercise of, of trying to address needs, both through ADA paratransit and through additional services that might impact people with disabilities who may not be within the service area. So it's, it's been a constant discussion for as long as, as I've worked with RTC and paratransit.
Well, I know there's an effort in, throughout the state, I mean, to try to expand the Medicaid service and dollars being spent, so wondering in that conversation if there's any way to help and assist in this, to provide funding. It's just more of a question to look at it. And I think one of the speakers mentioned an audit that took place in April, and is that a possibility that we could have that placed on an agenda to discuss what the findings were, or are there comments you could tell us about right now that?
It's, so it's still under review. We responded to the FTA's findings, and waiting to hear back from them. Once, that, once it becomes approved and final, then absolutely, we'll, we'll share it with, if you'd like, you know, as part of the GM report, or, or, you know, whatever you see fit, we'll make it available.
Well, I would defer to the chairman on that, but I, I do, you know, I'm sure all of us up here want help in these particular individual iss, um, issues and locations. And so as we're exploring, and you've been doing some pilot programming with Lyft, but I understand because one of the young people is working at Nellis, and so Lyft can't get in there, I guess. What are we doing to expand that to help? I mean, that's the main thing. I, I certainly agree with all of you, surveys and surveys and surveys and surveys and surveys, and results. I mean, we're all here today and alive today, and so how can we address doing something? I know you're working, so I mean, this isn't at all saying anything other than knowing your hearts are in the right place and trying to help, but is Lyft, is Uber, is there something else or another way?
And that's a great question. So first and foremost, the pilot with Lyft, it's small by design for a number of reasons, not to impact our contract with TransDev, and to ensure that we, based on best practice from other agencies, it, it's by design is small, and we focused on Southern Divided Transit Coalition's customers because they want out of the business. So these customers would have been left without any service. So great opportunity to pilot this very small group. As far as, and this pilot is for folks in the service area.
In the service area only, okay.
Yeah. And, and the, the study that, the results of the study, and this is, it's not so much a study, as, you know, Tina mentioned earlier, that we, we, we learn a lot when we talk to other, other folks in, in this industry, because we don't have all the answers, and it's people, transit agencies across the United States are trying different methods and approaches to, to serving their community. So this was really an opportunity for us to learn how other agencies, if in fact they provide service outside the service area, how do they do it? What is their funding stream? Do they use technology? Are they using taxis? Do they, do they charge more for, you know, providing service outside the service area? There's so many ways to look at, and how would you approach that, that that's what we are, that we're looking to, to do. The, the group that we hired is a local firm, and many of you have probably worked with Ms. Cindy Ortiz-Gupton. She is a part of the team. She has a daughter that's disabled. She brings a lot of insight into this, into this endeavor. Really excited to have her present to you in August.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I know you're working this and trying to see how we can resolve it, but for the here and now most specifically, so thank you, thank you.
I suppose one of the best things that we could do, too, is to let, to constantly be educating our constituents on how they can make wise decisions as parents and as caretakers, as to where they should, they choose to live, to make sure that these services are available to them in the established service area.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to say that both sides of this issue, I think, are trying their very best. And, and you know, you almost get to the point, are you going to meet the minimal requirements of ADA? Are you going to go with what would might be considered best practices? But we don't have always the amount of money to cover everything. As someone who's worked very hard in integration, in making, for years, I mean, decades, I'm that old, but I, I worked very hard for those who have the special needs, but I also found that sometimes it wasn't just possible to do it because then I had, you know, determined budgets, and there's a problem there, too. And then when you think, well, my child is certainly worth more than a budget, nonetheless, these are considerations. So we sort of have to blend. That's what I'm just trying to say. We have to blend, and you may think this takes a long time. I think this is very valuable, however, that we're having this discussion. I think it's very valuable that we got a specialist here to come and help us and, and give us additional information. And knowing the people that work here, I know they're going to try their best, and I agree with the mayor that we should see the audit when it comes out. We should see what comments were made and where we sit financially. I believe that we do have some, you know, as you see your fares going down in the area along the strip that brought the most fares of all for so long to us, these are considerations. Sometimes you just can't do everything, but I do feel we're going to try our best. I, I wanted to tell the parents that. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple thoughts. First, let's talk about those individuals outside the existing service area for fixed route and paratransit. The RTC has been very creative in trying to facilitate those eligible riders outside the service area with the absolute mandate to protect the integrity of our current ADA system, and it's worked well in many cases. For instance, I've learned through this process that if an ADA-eligible rider lives outside the service area but is brought inside the service area to a, a safe haven, a, a community center, a senior center, they would then be eligible for our system per ADA. In Stephanie's case, and I, I hope you don't mind me using this, unique, and I respect the fact that her son is not in, at a comfort level where even a safe haven works. So that scenario does not work for Stephanie, there's no question. And there are others like that, that we just don't have a solution without getting into some violations with the service area. We'll continue to work that. Stephanie, whether I missed it the last time or not, I think between the mayor and the county and our relationship with Nellis, I'd really like to look into why a certified Lyft driver or, or some driver couldn't get access with the support of the RTC and the city. Nellis has been great in working with those situations, at least from, from our perspective. So offline, let's see if we can pursue that as a potential option. And I'm sorry I didn't realize that before, that it's the Lyft driver or the Uber driver or a driver can't access Nellis. Let's see if we can address that. Back to the service area. Mr. Anderson, you talked about capacity and the capacity constraints. Equipment, labor, financial, what, what defines that capacity constraint?
It, it's, it's all of those things, and it's just the ability to provide the service. So if, let's, and if I remember this correctly, Wednesday mornings are, are a peak period for paratransit. If the service area were, were expanded, you'd see, and you likely see an expansion of, of demand for that Wednesday morning peak time period. You'd have to ink- You'd have to increase the number of vehicles. You'd have to increase the number of drivers. You'd have to increase the number of call takers. There's, to, to, to help absorb that type of, of demand. Without doing that, you will have trip denials. You'll have missed trips. You'll have late trips. You'll have the types of violations that FTA focuses on when they look at a system and how a system's doing.
And we are currently at three quarters of a mile? So, have we looked at the capacity constraints? Basically, the cost of expanding that to a mile or a mile and a half? I think it, at least from my perspective, it would be important to know the real number involved in that, because that's obviously a critical issue. And why we can't roll back to pre-recession? Well, partly because paratransit, as Mr. Trusdale, Trusdale announced today, they're increasing every year. So, what it cost us in 2008 is different from what it's costing us in 18. But have we ever looked at expanding? And not so much it's going to address some of our speakers' concerns. More so, if we do that, the potential, the potential ridership increases. I mean, that, I'm not even sure if we're aware of those eligible outside that would be impacted.
Chairman Brown, so, the presentation to you, to the board in August, will also include a funding model. So, we've done a cursory overview of what the costs would be to provide that. We're going to do a deeper dive into that. So, once you get the presentation from the consultant, then we'll, Mark or Mr. Guy Hobbs will present to you just what the fiscal impact could be. We do know right now that there are 655 clients that live outside of our service area. Those are the ones that we know about, meaning those are the folks that have come to the RTC Certification Center and have become eligible as paratransit clients. So, we know 655 clients that, now that does include, you know, back in 2011, we grandfathered 99 clients. To date, 48 of those folks still utilize the service. So, that's, that would be part of the analysis, looking at that, again, what we know of 655 paratransit eligible clients currently out of the service area.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman.
Early on in this, we were given some figures of, not a specific line item figure summary, but we were given some figures that were quite heavy financially. And so, maybe you could look at that in the meantime if you wanted to, but they were heavy.
And that's correct, Councilwoman. So, that, those, again, were kind of high level. We needed to factor in some of the things Mr. Anderson has talked about, and that's the capacity constraints. So, that is, that would be amending the contract with our paratransit provider, buying new vehicles, staffing the call center, things like that. That's, those are things that we're going to have to quantify.
And then it leads into the very, very uncomfortable conversation about what routes will we cut as a result to balance those? That will, we'll take you through that as well.
Oh, it's, it's coming down to our ability as a public agency from a fiscal standpoint. And I know that the RTC is entertaining a ballot initiative in 2020 to address some of our funding constraints. And I'm not so sure that the whole ADA paratransit may be brought into that public discussion as that initiative is developed. And, you know, we certainly have some advocates here, and maybe that's something we could at least look into to try to, if we move forward, to try to tie in a stronger financed ADA program. That's, I know there's a lot of work to be done, but let's not let that slip through. And then the final comment I'll make is, and Mr. Anderson, thank you so much. We appreciate it. One of the most difficult things, not only with the speakers today, but those that have addressed the RTC and the board members, is, there's no question that each and every member of this board wants to be part of the solution, individually and as those group, those groups that are outside the service area. But I think what was important in your presentation is, we've got to be very careful as a public agency in trying to address an individual outside the service area for fear that we would then open the RTC and the board to a civil case as far as what about everybody else outside that service area? And that, it's a very difficult message to, to put forth, but it's also probably our biggest constraint, that as much as we'd like to help an individual in a unique situation, this board, per ADA, needs to address that entire group of people.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? I mean, it's really, I guess, a view in the exploration, but also, of course, staff. Knowing that we have a great deal of respect for and work hand in glove with those of Opportunity Village, and they have a transport system. They have many services and jobs that they do to help with them with their budgetary. And I would imagine MJ and Fred and everybody else has already had the conversation. But they have a transportation service. Is there any way that we could look at that and maybe augment it, but staying within the boundaries of what the RTC is allowed to do? Just have a conversation and see if their transportation system allows for, man, being a 501(c)(3) anyway, maybe there's some movement that we could get to help individual families that are outside the service area without having to pick up the huge amount. So, just, I know you, you've probably already gone there, but maybe to go back there again and, and see if there's anything that we can do with that so we can really move, move this along.
So, Mayor, yeah, Mayor Goodman, she is correct. OV does, they have a, they have buses of their own that they do provide day trips for their clients. And they will take them outside the service area to events, locations, and I think even sometimes to their home for their clients who live outside the service area. I don't know how many buses they have, but I do know that they are in the business of doing that for folks outside the service area. We also work closely with Dignity Health St. Rose Dominican, Easter Seals of Nevada, Helping Hands of Vegas Valley, Jewish Family Services, and also Lend a Hand of Boulder City. And we provide, we're a match to those nonprofits. And they, they do provide some services for folks outside the service area. Unfortunately, it's usually capacity constraints, but we continue to work with these nonprofits to donate vehicles where we can and to assist them along the way. So, we will continue to, we have a very good relationship with all those nonprofits. And when folks call the RTC about wanting service outside the service area, those are the first organizations that we reach out to. Many times, it's based on their own capacity constraints, but it's, it's something that we, we continue to work on.
Well, I would, I would ask you, and I'm sure we'd all be interested to see it through you, Mr. Chairman, if that's a possibility. Because the reality is, they look to balance their budget. And so, if in fact, in sharing and supplementing the cost on an individual basis that wouldn't change the service area line before we're ready and can fund it, I would just ask you to visit again with Mr. Brown and everybody out there and the other agencies, but more specifically them, because their buses, they're fully equipped. They're, they're just the best. They really are.
We'll do.
Thank you.
Thanks, staff. Everybody involved with this issue. As much as we hear some of the comments that we don't care, I can, I can avow that not only staff, but each and every one of these board members truly cares about this. Robin, I'll use your daughter. She was our biggest cheerleader on the Little League field, rooting on her brother. So, it is personal, and I, and I absolutely respect where you're coming from. And continue to come to our meetings, to interact with staff, because you have to be part of the solution. We don't know what the solution is, especially when we're talking about from the individual to the whole ADA-eligible group out there. But please believe us that we are working towards that solution. And thank you all for continuing to come down and participate. Mr. Anderson, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. In the interest of time, we are going to hold an abeyance, item number 46, which was the presentation on the TIBP, the Transportation Investment Business Plan. I know that a lot of the commission members have interest in that, and yet I know that we're running out of time in holding your audience. So, we will, and we're going to skip item number 51. We do not have a need for a legal counsel closed-door session. We will move to the last item, which is your last citizen's participation period.
Thank you, Tina. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity.
So, Stephanie Versnik. I just need to clarify a few things. Yes, I am asking for services for my son. However, I'm asking for the, the service area to be expanded back to where it was in 2011, which would include a lot more people than my son. And then, on the Lyft and Uber, I'm not opposed to that, if we can work with Nellis. My son is autistic. The only problem is, it would have to be the same driver. It would have to be the same person. And if we can do that, then we can work something out with paratransit, and I'm okay with that. But I just want to make it clear that I'm not just out here asking for my son. I'm asking for other people who are in the same situation as I am. And it was something that, that we did for 10 years, and it was taken away back in 2011. I'm only asking that it be given back. And in my last testimony, I said it would be $1.5 million to restore it back to the way it was. So, if you guys want to look into that. But that's all I've been asking for, for the last six testimonies. So.
Thank you.
And I just have to clarify, we can never guarantee that it's the same driver with paratransit either. You know that.
Well, let's take a look at that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown. I just was thinking that perhaps, you know, the Uber drivers, the Lyft drivers, they change back and forth. Perhaps somebody on the base could be paid to meet him at the gate and to get him the rest of the way, somebody who already has approval. And it would be the same person. I don't, I just say, let's look into that.
We're certainly going to pursue that.
You use all that big influence you have, okay?
Are you looking at me?
Yes, of course.
I thought you were looking at the mayor's plural down here.
I already know how much influence he has. I want to see how much you have here.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Chair Brown, thank you again. Alita Dupree for the record as I take my last three minutes of public comment before I go away to a place with natural air conditioning. So, keep the videos coming, because I will be following your progress in my travels. I am fortunate to have tools. You know, my journey with RTC has been quite long, since I discovered you in 2001. As a disabled individual, I moved away from an area with infrequent bus service in a second-floor apartment to moving to a two-bedroom apartment with a roommate. And now Sahara, the SX bus, has 15-minute weekday service, which is very helpful to me. Thank you for listening. I hope we can continue to improve the efficiency of the Sahara route. And so, I went out, and I've had to own tools in my life. And so, I went and bought this phone